So I'll call the meeting to order at seven oh six P M. Courtesy of Harbor Networks, just so if you guys want to know the name of the company. And it also was just for a moment of light fun, you know, when it says like, it's like ninety eight percent complete with the updates. But then it just stays there for some reason and it gets to ninety eight. Yeah, I'm like, you gotta be, I'm almost, I was almost gonna text you Paul and Alan, I'm like. They're not gonna believe this, but and then then it finally updated, but anyway, so. Right, um, so. Think we can uh jump in, um. So the first item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes. We had quite a bit. And so I'll just see first, maybe we'll take the regular session meeting minutes to see if you guys had any comments. On the regular session, uh, meeting minutes.
See, I don't think, nothing, um, for the, for six twenty four.
Yeah, anything on eight fourteen or nine eleven, just for the regular, we can do the executive separate, but.
Um, oh, so one thing on uh eight fourteen. So. Lines twenty four and twenty eight, we have those two motions, um. For the executive session minutes. And so we talked about first approving and retaining all three of them and then decided to approve and release seven twenty three. So we just need to delete, I think, seven twenty three from the second motion.
Okay, and that's on the eight fourteen executive session meeting minutes, right?
It's in the regular meeting minutes.
So the second motion. Remove the seven fourteen, right?
Remove seven twenty three.
Oh, seven twenty three, thank you. Alright, I will make that change, okay.
Nothing for me, so.
Okay, alright, so then, um, do I have a motion to. To approve the six fourteen, eight fourteen and nine eleven regular meeting minutes. Okay, excellent, alright, all in favor, Paul?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Doug is yes, alright, great, thank you. Okay, and then maybe we'll shift over to the executive meeting minutes. And we have eight fourteen, eight twenty eight and nine four and nine eleven, so quite a few of them. Any questions on that?
So I think on the fourteenth, the first motion, um. That was made, Paul's just not listed in the vote.
Okay. I will add.
But then I think he has counted, yeah.
Okay. Alright.
That was it for the fourteen. I had nothing on the twenty eighth executive session. Uh, my one question for the eleven. Um, since. We asked Marguerite to stay on the meeting during executive session, do we need to list her as like another? Person present?
I would say yes.
I can, I can definitely add her, and that was on the eleventh, right?
That was the eleventh, yeah.
Yeah, I can make at least a note, maybe I'll do it right under the call to order that she joined us, right?
Yeah.
As a note, that makes sense, okay.
And then I know in your, um, when you sent these over Doug, you weren't positive about the motions. And I am also not positive, so I'm not helpful there, um, but also just wanted to make sure. Um, did you write down the, the votes, um? Because I just wanted to double check, you'd highlighted for the second motion that. Uh, Al voted no and Jesse voted yes, and I was trying to remember if that's. If that's what I remember.
Yeah, I, I do remember Al voting no, um, because he didn't wanna just offer for the rear parcel, that's what I'm trying to remember. And I remember Jesse being in favor of just voting for the rear parcel, but that's. Again, that's why I kinda highlighted it, let me check my notes. It's the September eleventh. Just gotta go somewhere else.
Which one is this, eight fourteen?
This is nine, this is nine eleven.
Alright, so I have the notes, pulling them up. There we go, sorry, looking at the wrong section. Yeah, I just, I have, um, an order, I just have no, yes, 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 yes. And Al usually goes first, so that's why I have Al as a no, and that's what I recall. But I do record four yeses after it, um, from my notes, so I think that is. Accurate from my notes. Yeah, it's not often we have a no, so. Um, Al has not emailed me either on these, right, so he's had them, so, um, so I'm assuming he is good as well, but, um.
And I think we can always revise them, right, if we need, needed to change, so I think that. Okay, perfect, so then, I'm good on the eleventh.
Okay. So.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, do we wanna, if you, we, well, I'll let you know, see if any of the comments, but once we review the last ones, um. Should we approve and release the ones on forty Atwood Street at this point? We can also approve to hold, to hold and retain, if we wanna wait for Al for next month, I mean, there's no rush to, but I think that topic is done. But.
I don't know, I think I would retain, cuz.
Okay.
You know, we don't know what's gonna happen with that property, right?
Yeah, I would agree with that, retain for now.
Okay. Alright, any other comments on the other ones?
So I think just the September fourth executive session is left. And. Oh, so really minor, um. But line twenty nine, there's an extra T in Atwood. And then thirty below it, um, it says rear third acre lot, I think we should say three acre lot. And then I don't know if it matters, but that was the meeting that I went with Al, um, to meet the owners. So I don't know if we need to include that, but.
Alright, hold on, let me pull that one up.
If we're gonna be making changes to executive session meeting minutes, we should probably do it in executive session. I mean, if it's. Anything substantive, anyway.
Alright, so but on that one, um, just for clarity, for so online, twenty nine, just stating was you and Al, correct?
Yep.
Yep, okay. Okay. Alright. If no other comments, say, can I get a motion to approve and retain the executive session meeting minutes from the. Eight fourteen, eight twenty eight, nine four and nine eleven, with the comments noted.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor? Um, Paul?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Doug is yes, alright, awesome. Okay, great. Alright, thank you guys for that, um, and again, we are caught up, and Paul, I got your meeting minutes, so I will circulate those. For the last meeting, and I'll probably circulate when I do meeting minutes for this one, probably this weekend, so we'll have that for next month, uh, which would be great. I just had the first item, I just had really town meeting recap, not that there's, you know, much to talk about, but I just figured I have it as an agenda item. You know, uh, I've never seen a town meeting vote, uh, on Costco that was so distinctly in one direction, which was very exciting.
Yeah, I don't think I've seen a vote on anything that was so one sided.
Yeah. Um, so, so good news hopefully for commercial tax base and, you know, hopefully stemming the tide of real estate taxes going up, so. So, but honestly, I didn't have anything else, just that wanted to put it on there in case we wanna talk about stuff, but otherwise we can move on, but curious if you guys had any thoughts or comments, otherwise we can, we can continue.
I'm good.
Uh, housing production plan update, Ellen, do you wanna provide an update?
Sure, so after we discussed, um, as a committee, I'm making those. Two minor edits, um, that H L C had requested. Um, community scale did that, and then we tweaked it a little bit further, um. Just to reflect, uh, some of the. Parcels that were kind of on that map along Route nine, um, included a lot of open space, so we asked them to make that change. Um, so that we were kind of accurately, accurately reflecting like the potential of land along Route nine, so. They did that, resubmitted to the state, and we got an email back within the last few days that it's now accepted. Um, so they will be sending out, um, a formal letter to that effect, um, but that is all set.
Awesome, great, Ellen, thank you for doing that. Um, next one is fifty five housing bylaw update, so actually Ellen, I'll turn it over to you again on that one, too.
Sure, so I sent, um. A document a little earlier in this week, um, that. Tried to summarize a little bit of what South Borough already has on the books in terms of, um. These inclusionary zoning levels, so basically, if new housing is being built, I'm. Above a certain number of units, so not a single family house, um. Then what percentage of those new homes need to be affordable at what level? And so. We already have, um, this type of provision in a few of our bylaws. Uh, at a few different levels, I'm so wanted to. Summarize that and then also share a bit of what some of the communities around us have been adopting in terms of both the. Percentage of units that need to be affordable, what level they need to be affordable at, um, so as we're thinking about. Um, how to structure the new proposed fifty five plus bylaw. Some of the options of what South Borough has adopted and still has, um, currently and what some of our neighbors are doing as well.
I'm just scrolling, I didn't get a chance to review before, obviously I see a lot of ten percent, what was West Borough's, I'm just looking at right now, oh fifteen percent, okay.
Yep. And so. Yeah, West Borough is interesting, and so this just passed last year, so they. For any new housing, um, not just fifty five plus with ten or more units, it has to be fifteen percent. Up to eighty percent A M I and then five percent up to one twenty. Um, so that fifteen percent is higher than. A lot of the other neighbors, um, there's a lot of ten to twelve and a half percent, and so. I think they kind of balance that against the five percent up to one twenty. Um, and there's also, which could be useful, they did, um, an economic feasibility analysis to come to those numbers. And so it's obviously not. Completely apples to apples, but I think there's a lot of good information about development costs in there that. Apply to West Borough, and so I think are definitely useful for us to, to consider, um. As we think about where to set. Where we wanna propose setting some of our levels.
I mean, I definitely think, as I mentioned before, I, I think it should be, you know, it should be at at least ten percent, right, it shouldn't be less than that, right? You know. Just being in the business, as you go above ten, it starts to really, you know. Yeah, put really a weight on actually developing the housing in the first place, right? And so I know, you know, again, we've heard references to twenty, thirty, forty percent at times from some community members, which I think is just, it just. It's not gonna, you know. It's just gonna kill the project, I mean, I mean, there is definitely ability to do a hundred percent affordable housing projects through a nonprofit developer that can really, you know. You know, or do higher percentages where they have access to state tax credits or federal tax credits, um. But again, at least from my perspective, we are, you know, obviously the Affordable Housing Trust, but from my perspective. Promoting housing production plus affordability within that, you know, that to me, it's a balance type of thing. Um, so. I was surprised by West Borough cuz fifteen percent is pretty high, um, and again, from my experience, Boston, Cambridge, and some of it all have twenty percent. And they have very little housing production at this point, cuz it's just, it's too high of a economic, you know, um, impact, you know. For them to be able to develop housing, so. You know, so at least my perspective is, I think ten percent makes a lot of sense, I mean, ten or twelve and a half percent, not gonna, you know. That's probably more feasible, once you start getting higher, it's just, it really becomes, I think, defeats the purpose of actually trying to create fifty five plus housing. So that our seniors have options, you know, so, but, and it is economics at the end of the day, so, but those are at least my initial thoughts, um. Um, I've also, I have seen some people start to do the hundred and twenty percent median income, right, trying to get a range. You know, it, it's, I mean, my perspective, this is kinda getting into the weeds, but. It could also be like an average of eighty, right, which gives some flexibility, you know, to the planning board or to a developer, so that, you know, maybe they have some units at sixty, maybe they have some units at eighty and some at one twenty. I know we've already heard from Lisa Braccio that, you know, she would love to see more deeply affordable units at fifty or sixty percent of median income. And, you know, again, part of it is just having some predictability around it, um, you know, but I've seen also other towns say. You know, we want an average of seventy, or we want an average of eighties, the separate of the percentage, right, and so that gives some flexibility that. You know, you can get a few units that are at fifty or sixty percent, but then you're offsetting it with some units that might be at, you know, a hundred, a hundred and twenty percent, but. You know, there is, that's another option too as well, but anyways, those are my quick thoughts on the percentage, but also the A M I percentage.
Yeah, that one twenty caught my eye too, so. I'm just trying to think this through, I mean, in South Borough, I would imagine our A M I is, is higher than a lot of towns, right, so. I don't know, is that an argument for a lower eight A M I, you know, the lower percentage or a higher percentage, or, or like Doug said, maybe it's an argument for. A range, I kinda like that, so you have some flexibility.
I'm trying to remember, sorry, the A M I groupings, like the communities included in an area are not. Always, um, the most logical, so I'm just trying to remember if West Borough is in the same.
Oh, so it's not.
Area, it's not town specific, yeah, it's sort of like a broader region, but it's not just like all contiguous towns. Let me see, I know we found this with the production plan.
So why are you doing that, Ellen, so this is just what we have now, right, what you've laid out in this document?
Yes, so, um, where I found in our bylaws where we currently have something is the downtown district, so that's within the last. Couple of years that that went in place, and so that's twelve and a half percent, um, at eighty percent A M I for four more units. Um, the M B T A zoning, we went with kind of like the base level that the state required. Outside of an economic feasibility analysis, so that's ten percent at eighty percent A M I. And then our like standard major residential development, um. Of eight or more units or eight or more lots is twelve and a half. At up to eighty percent A M I.
Yeah, and the other thing, on the M B T A Communities Act, the state purposely capped it at ten percent to avoid it. You know, avoid towns trying to do very high percentages to basically make it unfeasible. So the state actually capped it at ten, or ju, I did not cap, they fixed it at ten, cuz it's not lower or higher, it's just simply, the town can go up to, well, it's up to ten percent, um. Has anything actually been built under the new downtown district guidelines?
I think the, there's something being proposed, uh, so there's still, right, isn't it just, um. The East Main Street. I think that's the only thing that's, I don't, I mean. In my time paying attention to this, that's the only one that's come up, and I know there's been. Back and forth of would it be mixed use, would it be residential, and it seems like it's gonna be all residential. Um, but I think that's the only one.
Ellen, do you have any thoughts from Marnie or anybody from the planning board yet on this, have they've talked about it more openly?
No, no.
Percentage, yep.
Not yet, so, um, I checked in with Marnie and Mimi earlier in this week, cuz they had their planning board meeting on Monday. Um, and I know we had wanted to talk as a trust about this a little bit more in depth, so I think. I'd let them know that we were gonna be talking about this tonight, and then would check back in with them once we. Have a better sense of what we think makes sense.
And then right now, the twelve and a half percent for where it's under, uh, the downtown district and major special, um. That is at eighty percent median income right now?
Yes, so, yeah, so what it says in the bylaws, so that it would be eligible for the S H I, so that would mean. Up to eighty percent.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, you know, my thoughts on maybe start with percentage again, I mean. I mean, if we have two of the districts recently that are twelve and a half percent, I mean, there's probably some logic to being consistent with that, you know, at the end of the day. I don't think it'll run to the project on economic compared to ten percent, you know, um, I would definitely, just as. A member of this board would. Again, the fifty five plus is not to be, meant to be a hundred percent affordable housing bylaw, it's meant to really be an option for new housing types that we, you know, we hit the cap pretty quickly on, so. I would be in favor of, you know, discussing with the planning board a twelve and a half percent, you know, kinda fix it, and, you know, that's one, and then the second. You know, I'm definitely fine with it just being consistent with the affordable housing inventory too as well, I mean, I don't mind it being a range, but. It does start to get complicated that if, you know, if we start that bylaw, our, this bylaw starts saying sixty percent average or something different, um. But I do know that there's been some talk in the town about people doing some more affordable than just, you know, what meets the, um, inventory list, but. Twelve and a half percent at, you know, matching the inventory list, which is essentially eighty percent, you know, that to me, for this bylaw specifically, makes a lot of sense. But those are my thoughts.
So you're talking about twelve and a half across the board?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, well, look, I mean, personally, I would say, well, so, okay, ten percent, I think is perfectly just fine, right, you know, again, you get ten percent, you stay in lockstep, right? And you, you know, you're promoting senior housing, which is, for me, I think the housing typology is just as important as the affordability. But also, you know, I'm just trying to think in advance of the planning board, if they've passed two things already at twelve and a half percent, are they just gonna go to start there? So, um, I would be opposed to anything greater than twelve and a half percent, cuz I think that's just basically an impediment to actually getting the housing type that we. You know, this typology that we want in town.
I like the idea of twelve and a half percent, I think, keeping it consistent, as you're saying, with. You know, the other major bylaws, M B T A Communities is its own thing with its own reasoning for ten percent, um. And I think too. You know. Making the case that this is the floor, right, this isn't the ceiling, and so if we put something in place. That's really high, as you've been saying, Doug, nothing will get built, and so if, you know, the. The overall goal is to encourage more of this type of housing and make it more affordable, and then our. That's what the bylaw can do, and then our role as the trust is to. Help support projects with deeper affordability, but I think. The majority of projects that could be built under this bylaw will be built by private developers, and so I think. You know, we want to find a level that. Increases the affordability, but also increases the, the housing of this type.
And I think you have a great point, too, by lifting the cap on this bylaw, this does provide a pathway for us for, you know, doing a fifty five plus affordable community. That could have a much higher affordability, like, you know, this is actually unlocking the zoning for, you know, what we've been talking about recently. Um, you know, so I think that's a great point.
So I have a question about this cash contribution part, five C two. So is that a way to get around these percentages, like, instead of making a unit affordable, you, you pony up some cash?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so there is another part that I don't think I included here in our. Major residential development, so you can build off site. Um, so if, uh, yeah, if you're a developer looking for an out from this. You can get a special permit to build off site or to make a cash contribution, um. And I don't know to what extent, um, this bylaw was put in place. I wanna say at least twenty years ago, if not more than that, so I don't know, um. To what extent those other options or those kind of outs have been used. For developments in that time, um, but I think that's part of what we've talked about a little bit as well as kind of this like payment in lieu. That, um, if for whatever reason, uh. You know, a developer doesn't think it makes sense or doesn't want to include, um. Affordable units, then there are different kind of formulas. To put in, uh, to like stipulate how much they would need to pay and where that gets directed to, um. The car, I mean, this is probably a conversation for another time, but our current bylaw for major residential, major residential development directs that money to Shop C. Um, so that will need to be updated, um, and so, I mean, that's also made me question, like, what if Shop C didn't have. Money, so. I don't know that this was ever used, if, yeah, so I think a general bylaw cleanup might be another. Topic, um. But yeah, that's a really long answer to your question of, yes.
Well, one thing that. The second part of this for rental units, if I'm reading this right, you basically. You make a payment and calculate it over a term of ten years. Which to me doesn't seem long enough. I mean. I, I, if I'm reading this right, again, it seems like it would be in the builder's interest to just. I I if I'm reading this right, again, it seems like it would be in the builder's interest to just pay the money. And you take a hit for ten years, but then for the rest of the life of the development, you're, you know, you're back at the regular market rate. So I don't think ten years is long enough, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's actually interesting in Boston. So a lot of towns do allow a buyout, right? Or to build it offsite. It's obviously at the discretion of the, you know, the permitting authority, not the developer typically. Boston actually sets a rate per unit of the buyout based upon the neighborhood that it's in. It's actually, uh, so just more for background. I think if we require twelve and a half percent, you know, affordable, I guess the question would be is. Are the buyout provisions? It looks like the bio provision, did the downtown district have bio provisions as well or? Okay, so there might be something to talk with the planning board like. Well, first of all, you you might end up with a partial unit. I definitely see a lot of towns accept a cash contribution for a partial unit, right? So, you know, if you have to build, you know, ten point three units, you really, it's. Really hard to build ten point three units. Some towns round down. If it's below ten point five, some towns round up. That's just something else to think about, just how the math works. But some towns have just said, you know, you know, point three times whatever rate or calculation you want to do. And that goes to. I think it should be directed to the Affordable Housing Trust, right? So I think if there's any kind of buyout, it should go to the Affordable Housing Trust under this new fifty five plus bylaw. I think my thought would be is if it can be built onsite, that's always better. Um, but you know, if somebody approaches the planning board in their discretion, right? I mean, again, if somebody want, you know, we have a project that needs some funds and, you know, we get the equivalent of three affordable unit contribution, but we can go build twenty units. Because it helps us, you know, make the project work. I've seen cities do that too as well, but. Might be a good discussion more Ellen with the planning boards, how to approach, but um I don't think I'm opposed to. The bylaw having flexibility in the discretion of the planning board itself. Um, otherwise, I think the base case would be is it's required to be onsite. Um, but to Paul's comment like. I don't know if it's interesting that the downtown district is kind of silent on this. And I'm not saying I I like the ten year calculation either. And I'm not sure we're sophisticated enough to start picking, you know, cost per unit as South Borough, but. Um, but that was could be something too where simply it is maybe a round down roundup situation. And then. It's in the planning board's discretion because then then it could be just, you know, developer comes say, hey, I'm making it up, but I'll I'll pay you guys two hundred and fifty thousand per affordable unit not to build them. It's got to be something of substance, right? My worry is that some calculation makes it pretty nominal, which is that's not what we, you know, we might also just have them build them on site. So I think the first thing we want is we want, we want the units to be built, right? So I think it's almost like we should have it be onsite. And maybe they can approach, maybe there's some legal, well, leeway in the regulations that allows the planning board to consider a buyout option. You know, but it it shouldn't be at the developer's election, I guess, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I think I was looking at, so West Borough's new bylaw, I'm. Includes. They can go to the developer can ask the planning board um. To grant them a payment in lieu instead. And it's calculated at two times the current four person AMI. So. It seems to be for both ownership and rental. Um, so South Borough's current. Four person. AMI is a hundred and seventy three thousand dollars. So we'd be talking.
Okay.
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a unit.
Yep. Well, first of all, that's substantive. I think at that value, probably if I was the developer, I would just build it onsite. You know, um, if it was rental, uh, I would say if it was rental, if it was condo. Maybe not, because obviously a condo unit could be worth a million bucks, right? Um, market right wise. And so. Um, I actually like that. That's actually a great, um, but by the way, Ellen, this is awesome that you were able to track down all these examples. Um, but I actually liked that because it also keeps pace with, you know. Like it makes it like based upon a a stat that is, you know. Easily found, right? It's just two times the, you know, eighty percent, you know, whatever that is. And that's. Times it by two, it's pretty straightforward. Developer can find it, they can understand it. Um, I do think on the for sale, it probably. Would encourage them to talk to the planning board about it. Again, I would think it should be in the planning board's discretion. I think if it's rental, you're probably getting to the point where. The buyout's almost expensive as building the unit itself onsite. So maybe just might just build it and rent it, even though they're getting less rent. Um, but. I think it's very interesting. I think I like that. That's kind of a really interesting concept to talk with the planning board about.
I wonder.
Yeah.
Whether any of this has been a gating factor towards building a town at all, because. I don't think I've heard that it was. I mean, it seems like there's other gating factors, usually location, but. So. I mean, it it seems like we got in place unless I'm wrong. I mean, you know, hasn't hasn't hurt us. So.
Yeah, if if anything, I mean, again. I mean, the one thing we do know that's hurting us is the cap, right? On senior housing. Um, and then once we remove the cap, if we can be twelve and a half percent and it's qualified for SHI inventory. Um, that makes a lot of sense to me, right? And I think. I don't think that twelve and a half percent is going to stop someone coming in and building for sale fifty five plus or even rental fifty five plus, right? I think there's still a pretty strong to make, like the economics will work, I would think.
Yeah.
And then maybe just kind of summarizing on the affordable side. You know, Ellen, I think, you know, letting the the planning board know. I don't get to vote on this, but let letting the planning board know they like, that's kind of our thoughts on maybe affordable and, you know, median income percentage. But then, you know, on on the. You know, the affordable units, I mean, pro rata units, the simplest thing might be round down or round up, right? That you could do it that way, or it could just be a partial unit, you know, does do that, you know, Westboro type, you know, payout. So if you're eleven point three, then you pay point three. Times the, you know, two times the median income or whatever that calculation is. And. And I think there might be the right for the developer to bring it up, but I definitely think it should still be in the discretion of the planning board of the town, right? So it's not an automatic.
I agree with all of that. Thank you for for summarizing.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah.
Ellen, were there other key topics? Um, I mean, I know that maybe we're they're not as far along on this. I think one was, you know. I mean, we were just trying to, you know, remember lift the cap, and then it became very complicated. So the whole thing's being rewritten, right? So, um, but was height or number of units per acre? Were there other? You know, parameters that we want to talk about time may not be ready to talk about, but I'm just curious. Was there anything else that you want to bring up on this one?
Take a look. I think this was sort of the stickiest. Um. There was some language in there about density that. It sounded like the planning board was looking to just make consistent with other parts of.
From an earlier meeting, it's currently capped. The density is capped at three units per acre.
Yeah. And so. I'm looking through the notes that. Yeah, I think we had. Fewer conversations. Um. Yeah, so there is maybe am I allowed to share?
Um, I can, I can give you permission. You should be able to share now.
So. This was the copy of the bylaw that I'm. We've been kind of commenting on. Um, and. This is the, that's impossible to read when it's highlighted. Um, but so this is the. Language around density. Um. Um, maximum of three units per contiguous acre exclusive of eighty percent wetlands. Um, and so. Mimi's comment was that this both that the density is too low and the language is too complicated. And so, um, which I agree with wholeheartedly. Um, and so. Yeah, both. Yeah, Marnie and Mimi shared those those sentiments. So we didn't get as much into. What we would want that density to be and how you consider wetlands in there. I think the. Direction of those conversations for that, it should. It should be treated the same way as it is in other sections, um, in terms of the the wetlands. calculation. Um, but we had less specifics on what the the density levels would be.
So I I would say, I will, I definitely agree it should just be treated the same way in terms of wetlands as other sites, right? You know. Um, and then in terms of density, I'd also agree three acres per unit is not enough. Um, I don't know if I have a specific number in mind, right? You know, but that could be a great open discussion, but I would think at least my perspective, if Paul agrees, we can let, you know, the planning board know we agree with those two comments. Um, and maybe there's just more discussion around the units per acre, you know. Um, you know, part of it is just logistics at some point. Again, these, you know, fifty five plus tends to be town homes or other things, but. I mean, the only other reference which we would would never go this high is fifteen units per acre is the MBTA zoning, right? So that's probably the highest of the spectrum, but. You know, but three is definitely very low density, I would say, you know, for what we're trying to achieve. But I don't know, Paul, your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with everything you said. I mean, I don't really have, I don't know what the magic number is, but three seemed low.
Yep.
Well, now that you're saying, maybe it makes sense to do something similar to the MBTA law. Because uh, again, that's that's a maximum, right? It doesn't mean you have to build that dense, right?
Ellen, so. I haven't looked at the use table, but the fifty five plus is only allowed in certain districts too as well, correct? Or is it an overlay that it could be anywhere? I'm trying to remember. Go back and take a look at that. Um.
I think it's an overlay, but I that's a good thing to check.
Yeah, but it may not be in all districts too. I say that that also could be helpful to know as we talk about this further, right? Um, yeah, you know, because if it's only in certain districts, right, you know, that it, you know. Um, I do also know, this is more of a planning board discussion to you. Also know sometimes. Some towns will do, you know, you can do, I'm making up eight units per acre, right? You know, kind of, you know, as of right. And then, you know, you can go above that to a certain level by special permit. I mean, there's different ways to do it too, but. So. Um, but I agree with Paul. I mean, I like, I don't know what the right number is. Um, you know, um, but it definitely is above three.
Yeah.
That's, um. And I think the goal there in my mind would be is just, you know, finding a number that obviously, you know. Town meeting would find acceptable too as well, right? So I do get a little nervous if we get too close to the fifteen per units per acre, because that's the MBTA Communities Act. And that feels dense, right? Type of thing for South Borough. Um, you know. And I don't necessarily want to over stratify it. So where we're saying, yes, well, on Route nine, maybe that can be that dense. But I just, you know, I'm trying to think of what's the right way to. Get people comfortable, but that the the use table might be first finding out where is it allowed? And that might also be different too, where some districts are just a certain number that might be lower and maybe other like Route nine, you know, quarter might be. A little higher by special permit or something, but that could be a good way to to purge it too.
Right. I mean, what if you were to build like a Madison Place that was all fifty five plus?
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
Yep.
I don't know what the density is there, but it's got to be pretty high.
Yeah. Yeah. And again, if you think about, I mean, you know, some of the chapter forty Bs, a three or four story building, you know, on Route nine, you know, that was fifty five plus. I don't think many people would be opposed to, you know, type of thing. Um, so, but that's probably not a density of five units per acre either, right? That's probably a higher density.
Right.
But that might be an interesting discussion too about. You know. Looking at densities based upon what district is in, or maybe there's a site plan, no, if there's, you know, one's a site plan and one's a special permit approval or something like that, that could be helpful too. I mean, again, in fifty five plus housing is no question. I mean, obviously it's not commercial per se, but it definitely is, you know, has very little burden on services, you know, in terms of school age children and other things, right? So it is typically a net add to real estate taxes, so. Okay.
Sorry, now I'm looking things up. I'm looking things up as we're talking.
Ellen, I curious, what do you think next step? I mean, so I think one, obviously you were laying back to, um, you know, um, to Marnie and. You know, just, you know, our general discussion of topics, I think we're pretty aligned, at least on the frame of reference we we collectively agree with. Um, I'm sure we'd be more than happy to join them, you know, even as a full committee or a part of us at one of their planning board meetings. Defer to you. I mean, I I know Paul and I would probably love to dig into if they have another draft in the future, we can really dig into it, but. You know, I am mindful that it's November and before you know it, we're going to be in January or February. And then, you know, town meeting is going to be upon us. And what I don't want to do is. Like we did before, like we pulled back in the last town meeting. So I definitely want to make sure that we get this on the town meeting. So I just, I'll defer to you, Ellen, but let us know. What's helpful for us to be where and then we'll we will get there.
That sounds good. So I'll um, reach back out to Marnie tomorrow and let her kind of give her an update on our conversation. Um, and. Yeah, I mean, so if planning met earlier this week, are they every three weeks? Do we know?
I think it's twice. I think they're every two weeks. I think it's twice a month, planning board.
Okay.
I think.
Um. Yeah, so I'll check in with her and see if there's, you know, a good time, because I agree with you that we want to keep this moving. So if it. Would be helpful to do some more work on the the draft and then come talk to planning or if it'd be helpful for us to. Try and come to their next meeting and have more of these discussions to then. Get some of the language closer to what we think would be final.
Okay, great. Anything else in this topic?
I think so. Thank you.
All right, great. Um, next item is MHP, MHP's technical assistant application. Then we left last this, I think Al first was going to try to confirm if we could have some staff help. Um, Al's not on tonight. I think he did inquire. I haven't seen anything more in the file to that chain. Um, so I can ping Al separately, um, offline. Um, because I think we're all on the same page. It'd be great to. You know, apply for something. And then Ellen, you also brought up, there's, I mean, this might be, well, there might be two things. That might be more of the state program, but. This is, um, I guess the question is MHP is also a free technical assistance program potentially, but. Um, so I'll pause here. I don't know, Ellen, if you have any of the thoughts on this. I know I can follow up with Al just on the the staff person at the town level, but. Any other comments on this?
Sure. So I just, I checked in with um, my colleague who does the like intensive technical assistance specifically for trusts. And so she said they open up the application for that late November, early December. And then I'm asking me needs to have that back end of December, early January. Um, I don't think it's that intensive of an application. Like, I feel like it's something that. We could handle as a committee. I think you, they ask for um, potentially some like letters of support from. Uh, either the town man, yes, from others in the town. So I can see. Um, if we can take a look at, you know, last year's application, um, if that's posted somewhere, just to get a sense of what is involved in that. Um, but yeah, at least confirmed the the timeframe or what that would be.
Okay, great. Awesome. Great. Yeah. So if you if you get the application, you know, when it opens up and circulate it, um, I think we definitely take a look at it collectively. And I'm more than happy to help on that too as well, um, especially if it's a lighter lift. Um, not that I oppose the heavier lift items, but I'm just.
Maybe as well volunteer for that one.
Yeah. All right. Uh, next item, um, the Affordable Housing Trust CPC uh, application. So. Um, Ellen and I were both at the last CPC committee meeting, um, and um. I think we had a a robust discussion. Um, and I think there we just, we really clarified and settled in on. What we're really asking for is the excess funds over a hundred thousand. Um, and, you know, so I think we had a good robust discussion on that. Um, you know, again, we talked about kind of, you know, we we talk about. Um, you know, again, we talked about kind of, you know, we, we talked about last meeting, but, you know. All the efforts we've done to date, we thanked the committee, because obviously one that, you know, with the funds in hand, we've been able to compete, right? And actually be in the market, which we never could do before. Um, we talked about several of, you know, not specific addresses, but talked about that we pursued three or four opportunities. Um, they did ask for some details of why they didn't kind of work, and we kind of went through, you know, part of it was market, part of it was, you know, we couldn't get more than one unit out of it. And kind of, you know, gave some high levels without getting into the specifics of address or names or anything like that, because a lot of these are still in executive session. Um, and also noted that how, you know, which was great, many people have actually been reaching out to us through directly or through the town manager of. Offering their homes up too as well, which again was, you know, something that was very interesting, and not that we've actually made one of those work yet, but that was good, so. Um, you know, so, um. You know, again, I think there were some comments from some of the members about, you know, concerns about. You know, location, obviously, I think the water tower site came up, you know, definitely as part of that conversation. Um, it was a good robust discussion because of that, which I thought was good. Um, you know, again, we talked more about the fifty five plus type option, you know, site agnostic, right? But just thinking about, we thought that was an important thing. Um, you know, and, you know, obviously, you know, our goal is to try to find sites that make sense and, you know. Also letting them know, we don't want to just, you know, spend all the money on one single family home, you know? Um, and, um, so I think that resonated too, so I thought it was, I thought it was a good meeting. Um, they did send us a new application, which was really a word version of the other application, uh, which was helpful, but. Um, I was able to, uh, you know, take Ellen's last submission, update it, transfer it in. Um, Ellen was second set of eyes, which is great, and so we submitted that back to Lisa just yesterday. Actually, no, this morning, uh, it's been a long day, this morning, I think, um, so they have that and. And I think Ellen, the next meeting is next week, correct?
Yes, I want to say Wednesday, but I can just confirm that, either Wednesday or Thursday.
Do you think we're going to be on the agenda?
Yes, um, yeah, so that is next Wednesday, I'm. So, yeah, I haven't seen it, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Um, we don't have an agenda yet, but I know the, the goal of that meeting is really to work through, um. Kind of any outstanding questions, go through like revised applications, um, so we have. C B C has three applications in and. The trust and everyone else who submitted one got kind of this, a, a list of questions that the committee had and was asked to resubmit the application. So that's what Doug did this morning and, um. As we get in ones for the other applications, the idea is to. Go through those on Wednesday, um. Yeah.
So I do have a conflict next Wednesday, um, I have a, an awards dinner, um, for a real estate organization that I'm, I'm on the, um, executive committee. Um, so Ellen, I know that you will be there, um, but. Paul, I don't know if you're available to attend CPC next week, it's actually, or I don't know, but if not, I think Ellen can represent us, although she'll. She'll have to get up, I think, and walk across to the table, sit down at the other side, but, uh, I don't know, Paul, if you're available, but unfortunately I am not available next Wednesday night.
Not either, I got regional school committee meeting that night, so.
Okay. Um, so Ellen, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming it's fine that you can just, I mean, you, you know, as much as, as the rest of us, so, but, um. You know, if you can represent us that night, that would be great.
Yeah, happy to do so.
Yeah, great. Um, okay, um, and I did send them the revised housing production plan as well and the email, so just that they had it with the tweaks. Um, so they should have everything in one place now, which I think would be great, and I, and honestly, I think. Again, I, I, they're definitely a support for our efforts, right? I mean, obviously with everything, there are also some concerns, but I thought it was a good robust discussion, but, uh, but I do feel like we're in a good place that. Even one of the members suggested, you know, it's almost like we should get into the habit, this is happening every year at town meeting where. We're transferring the excess funds, you know, over a certain amount, and so. And we do think it's probably going to be another fifty thousand dollars or so above the hundred, you know, we won't know till next year, but it's been pretty consistently about fifty grand per year, so. So I think that's actually good, because as we know, we're going to need every dollar, um, so. Um, okay.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I'm not sure, sorry, just last thing on this, I'm, I'm not sure if her email went to everybody, but Katie Berry, who's the housing authority. Representative to the CPC, um, let us know that the housing authority voted to support our CPC application. Um, so that's just another nice piece of, yeah, support from the other. The other group really focused on these issues in town, so.
Like I just noticed, we have one attendee, it's Kristen Leval, so I don't know if she.
Yep.
Wants to say anything on this, but.
Yeah, Kristen, feel free, if you can hear us, if you want to raise your hand or have any comments, um. Excellent. All right, you should be able to hear us, are we, should be able to hear you now?
Okay, yes, that okay? I actually wasn't joining for comment, was literally just joining to listen and learn, and I, I actually learned quite a bit from tonight's discussion, so I appreciate. You know, the work and, and again, the, the conversation, especially in the first half of the meeting, I learned quite a bit, so thank you.
Awesome, well, thank, well, thank you for attending, appreciate it.
All right, have a good one, guys.
Yep. All right, okay, all right, then, uh, next item is new member discussion, and, and Paul, I'll turn it over to you, um. Um, in terms of the potential member, uh, that will be at the, I think, the select board. Uh, potentially appointing, uh, meeting next week, but, um, but Paul, you want to give it a download?
Yeah, I think I've mentioned his name before, David Joyner is, has applied officially, he got the green light from his company, Bank of America, so. Uh, yeah, like you said, Doug, I, I believe it's next Tuesday night, right? Um, he should be, he said, he said he could be in attendance at that meeting, so. Hopefully that'll get all squared away, I, I'm not sure if there was another, I thought Al said there was another person who had applied, but.
Yeah, and I, I think Al said he, there was a name and number, I think he talked to a woman, I'm blanking on her name, I think of his email, um, but I have not heard from the town that anyone else actually had applied. And so all they had was, uh, David Joyner, um, and she asked if we'd like him to be on the, um. The, uh, you know, for the select board, I definitely said yes, I mean, obviously he has a background in finance and affordable housing finance, and so I thought that is just great, you know, for us, so. Combination of, I think, you know, again, I've been pretty excited, we have great diversity of backgrounds, um, and having David join on that side, I think would be great too as well, so. Um, yeah, so I'm, I'm excited, um. You know, um, I don't think we necessarily need to take a vote or anything, you know, I mean, I think the board has the right to do that if we want to support that, but I think the town's on path to appoint him at this point, so. Unless, Paul, you think differently, but I, I think, you know. And Al will obviously be on the committee, I can always reach out and touch base with him just to make sure he's going to be there, I'm sure he'll be there Tuesday night.
Yeah, I, I don't see a need to take a vote, but, uh. I might, I might, I might show up as well, just in case, so.
Yeah. Great.
But yeah, I'm, I'm really excited too, because, um, I'm hoping he can answer all the questions I've had about. Creative ways to use what money we have and, you know.
We should, we should make sure it doesn't feel like an interrogation the first night he joins us, right? We're just gonna.
Well, just put him first on the agenda, just go, tell us everything you know, but.
That's it. Um, awesome, great, um, so I will reach out to Al as well, just to touch base with them before Tuesday night, if I can get a hold of them, um. Okay, um, the next three items were just placeholders, um, again, on the agenda, I don't think I have anything specific on the three. Um, although I, I have heard, well, actually, well, maybe. The first two, I don't have any discussion items on, but before I get to the third one, I'm curious if you guys have any discussion items on the financing or other strategies for affordable housing? Okay. Um. I think, I think there's been some word that there might be a parcel on Route nine that's going to be coming to market, um. It's the old, yeah, it's the old restaurant site, I think, um, that's demolished, um. It's a pretty big site, um, to be honest, right? So I don't know if the Affordable Housing Trust will have the funds to actually figure out how to, you know. Take down a site like that, but just, I'm simply knowing it, because I think it came across an email too as well to me. Um, but I don't know if you guys have heard anything about that site, but there seems to be some, um. Um, spec, or certainly, some, some, some talk about that might be coming out to market.
Yeah, I got that email, so.
Yeah, so I think if I'm looking at the right thing, I'm. Listed at two forty one, two forty five Turnpike Road, does that sound right? The site that was, okay, so what, um, I'm seeing is that the sale price is two and a quarter million. Um, so for one point eight acres, um. So I think that's something to keep in mind, and like you said, it's a big site, so I don't know the potential of. Getting a piece of that, but. Yeah, I think the, the sale price was, um.
Yeah.
A little discouraging.
Yeah, and it's, it obviously.
Two point two five million.
Two point two five.
Yeah. So definitely someone first just to keep an eye on, who knows who picks it up, right? It's also on Route nine, so honestly, part, you know, commercial tax base would be great, you know, commercial user would pick that up, right? Um, but to your point, Ellen, who's to say that someone doesn't look at it for some type of housing or other development and, you know. And so to keep an eye on it, but, um, but yeah, I think we all got the email, which is good, so it's more just FYI, I think as us as a committee, maybe we just keep an eye out for it to. You know, see what happens, and see if it doesn't create some opportunity somewhere down the road, um, but. You know, kind of nice that it is on, you know, I want to say the north side of town, but, you know. You know, walking distance at least to the middle school and other things, you know, so it's, you know, definitely interesting sight if something comes out of it, you know, but, um, so. Um, okay, and then, to be honest, I don't think, unless you guys disagree, I don't think we have anything for executive session tonight. I don't think we have any kind of pending topics or anything to update on, but I'll pause to see if you guys think, we can obviously go into executive session, but. Is there anything you guys think we need to discuss in executive session tonight?
I don't think so.
You know, and I, I'm, I'm definitely a, a public servant or, you know, public, uh, volunteer, but I am acknowledging Paul's dress tonight. Um, and understanding that there are seven minutes, uh, before, I think, or maybe two minutes before kickoff, um, so, um.
Glad you took that hint, Doug.
Yeah, that's right, I was like, I'm, I feel like, I feel like I'm not representing appropriately, I feel like, you know, I'm underachieving right now, um. All right, great, well, I think honestly, that's it, uh, for tonight, I think just more for logistics, our next meeting is. The eleventh of December, um, at seven P M. Um, and so I think that's in the calendar. Uh, one thing I will probably do is I will probably prepare a list of dates for, in December, just for twenty twenty six. Just to kind of get those on the calendar, I think that was really helpful, that we get those all out there, like kind of pre-resert, not that we can't move them, but. Um, yeah. All right, great, um, well, if nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Paul?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Doug is yes, awesome, um, great discussion, Ellen, let us know about the planning board, um.
Yep.
And, um, you know, and hopefully we'll have a, a, a fifth member by, uh, next Tuesday night, which would be awesome. And then, um, yeah, um, if I don't talk to, I'm sure I'll talk to you guys, but if I don't, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I can't believe we're already in the holiday season, so.
I know. Me too.
All right, have a great night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.